Except for Randy, did we hear anything?
Um.
You should be coming, so.
Yep.
All right. Uh, additions to the agenda?
Uh, no additions to the agenda. Uh, one addition Lou is going to be just mentioning your reports, the WCD report, but other than that, we're good.
Are we gonna do Bruce on his W or his, um, world's best workforce?
No, that was, that was the last.
He and I had a discussion, I tangled him up, okay.
Yeah, he, he got me all mixed up.
Okay, cool.
That's a problem.
Okay. Uh, adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. District 741 is proud of, we don't have anything there. Anybody here for public comment?
Well, how about that trap team? I think they're at the same team today.
Uh, I, I talked to Matt, uh, or Max a little bit before this, and he said one of our students was actually leading at one time, and the team was doing very well.
Perfect leading squad.
But there were still, I think only like fifty percent of the scores had come in yet, so we're still waiting to find out what happened.
Hmm, good.
But they were shooting very well.
Cool.
They've been doing a good job.
Yeah. Um, number seven, approve and correct the minutes from the May to, uh, May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen regular school board meeting in your packets.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
I got a motion from Bruce and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Consent agenda, we got six of them underneath the consent agenda. Number one is review and consider approval of the resignation of Maggie Gilmore from preschool plus site assistance position effective June first, two thousand eighteen. Review and consider approval of the resignation of Heidi Riley for her duplicating position effective May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Number three, review and consider approval of the resignation of Helen Storecam from her food service position effective May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Number four, review and consider approval of, for childcare leave for Natalie Utsch from approximately November tenth, two thousand eighteen, through January fourth of two thousand nineteen. And then review and consider approval accepting the following donations, uh, seven hundred fifty dollars from the Lutheran Endowment Committee for School Patrol. And number six, review and consider adjusting powers for the fitness center supervisors effective July first, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Bridget Jones, approximately twelve hours per week, and Jerome Feigum approximately averaging fourteen hours per week. So that's on your consent agenda.
I would move approval.
I got a motion from Rick.
Second.
And second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. All right. Going on to business, anybody in the adden- audience, all those hundreds and millions of people around the world here watching us, if you have any questions, just go ahead and let us know, okay? Review and consider approval of revising the two thousand seventeen eighteen revenue and expenditure budget, it's in your packet.
Yep, if the board remembers that we went over this last, um, time, so unless there's some questions on there, uh, there's one number that I'm not a hundred percent sure on, it looks a little high, but we've checked it a couple times and it seems right, and that's the building, or the long-term facility maintenance, you know, carryover at the end of the year. Um, I think we're just gonna run with that number, and when the audit gets done, we'll know for sure all that ends up, uh, it seems a little high to me, but when we look, it keeps popping up that way, so it could change, I think, when the audit's done, but we're gonna let the audit do it, so I think I'm ready to have this one approved.
Okay.
And again, um, we're up a little higher than what we thought, and that's primarily because of that special ed dollars that we got. Um, just a forewarning to the board, uh, I went to a workshop yesterday when I found out about the grant, um, uh, that I'll talk about during my reports, but one of the things they said is that because the legislature didn't do some of the things that they want, they may not be able to adjust the dollars that they normally do. For instance, when the state gets done, if they're short on one part, they take from other pots that are over, and they put it in there, it doesn't look like they're going to have that at the end of this year, and being the legislature didn't adjust for it, we may not, they may look at the special ed money and say, we gave out too much.
Give it back.
And take it back. So I'm just a little worried about that particular thing. Um, when Tom Melcher talked about it, he said, well, they could correct that when they go for, to the two thousand nineteen session, so that's what he's hoping that they'll do, but just be aware that what they give, they appear to be able to take, so.
And it's special ed, so you never know where at the end of the day, even at the end of the year, where you're gonna be.
My first year here, they took a hundred thousand dollars out of our budget.
Yeah.
For that, so, but it, other than that, I think it's the same that I explained last time, so I think.
I can remember what was that amount that was it, that we got additional?
About a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
A hundred and seventy-five, okay.
Yep. So any questions on the part of the board, otherwise I think we're ready to approve this one.
I'll make, I'll make a motion too. I'll second.
So I got a motion from Heidi, and second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of the resolution adjusting educational programs and positions effective for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
Um, if you take a look at that, there's two things we're reducing, um, uh, secondary staff reduction really is Joan, um, we're not replacing that position. Now, you would think, okay, we save all of her salary, but we don't. Uh, we have to, she did teach some classes, and we need to fill those classes, so Natalie Utsch will no longer be shared between Painesville and Recoree. Uh, Recoree will offer a class, and they will still remain part of our FFA program, but she will not be going to Recoree to teach next year. All right, so she'll be taking over some of those classes, so it's about a point seven that we saved with Joan, and that's the amount there, the fifty-nine thousand. Uh, at the same time, there is a cost we have to cover because we're going down to one media specialist now, we do need to cover some other time because of, of doing that, so there's about two thousand dollars worth of paraprofessional time at the elementary that we need to add. It's about one hour a day, I think, or a week, a week, that we need to add to cover some of the things that we have. And then the duplicator position, we have talked a number of times about that, we've reduced it, um, throughout the time here, and, and we are going to discontinue that, and, and that's about a forty-seven hundred dollar, um, amount, I will tell you that there will be times that we will hire somebody to do duplicating work, it just won't be a full-time. At the beginning of the year, we're going to help teachers with things that they need to get done, so we'll bring somebody in to do some duplicating at the beginning of the year, there may be other times during the year that we need to do that to help, um, when things get really busy, but at least right now, we will not have the position itself.
Will there be somebody that can, uh, call in the repairs and all that, or?
Um, we'll, we'll figure out a way that we're going to deal with the repairs. I think we'll, we'll have to come up with a process that the moment a staff member notes that it's down, that they just call the office, and from that point, the office will take care of it and take care of all the repairs. Yeah, we're not interested in having any of our equipment be down, and, uh, that's something that we'll have to talk about, but I, I think it's just as simple as, it's not working, call the office ASAP. Um, at that point, probably somebody from the office may go down, take a look at the machine itself to make sure that it's nothing that we can do, and then they'll call to make sure that we get somebody out. Um, Metro has been pretty good about getting into those machines ASAP. The good thing is, is that we also have, I think at the house, high school, we have at least three good machines, pretty good sized machines, that they can just go to the other one, and with the follow-me printing, any machine that they have sent that work to, they can just go to and, and, and print it off right away.
So just to reiterate, I know when we're talking, so that the people in the audience that are watching this here, when we say we're reducing, uh, staff position, Joan, that's actually a media-centered position that we no longer need, so, just so everybody is clear that.
Yeah, be careful, most school districts of our size will have one media person.
Right, but they, but, I mean, I hate to put somebody's name out there all the time because majority of the people that are in the public don't know who those people are.
Oh, you got it.
And so.
Joan was retirement.
Yeah, and, and which was our media specialist.
Yes.
Yeah, so, just so, like I said, sometimes.
Yep.
So I got a motion from Heidi.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried.
Yeah.
Oh, is that a resolution, I'm sorry, yes, it is a resolution, so, go ahead. My mistake.
Mark?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Heidi's carried.
And beware that we do have some six, um, period classes and stuff, they are going to adjust a little bit more, but there's no additions for those six-period classes, same number as we had last time.
Okay. And that's all subject to change anyhow, as the numbers come in for next year, so.
Yes.
It's our best knowledge for right now.
Right, right now, the number of six-period classes, but at the same time, if a need comes up, we may have to add another one.
Right.
Um, we won't probably reduce based on what I'm seeing, I think we need to have what we, we've got in place.
Right. Okay, number three, review proposed two thousand eighteen nineteen revenue and expenditure budget.
Okay, we just wanna go through, um, this a little bit, if you just take a look, and I'll start at the top, the biggest things for me are going at the bottom, but you'll see that our revised budget, um, it compares seventeen eighteen to where we are for eighteen nineteen, so it's not an apples-to-apples piece. Um, right now, our, our revenue that we think we're gonna get in is, um, nine million seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, and you'll see that we are overspending a little bit, that is specifically caused because of our negotiations. So we will be spending down our reserve fund a little bit, that is calculated on my part, I expected it. To tell you the truth, the special ed dollars helped considerably because in the end, when we talk about, um, the fund balance, it won't not go down as much as I thought it would go down, so I'm happy about that when we get down to the end. Um, food service, you can see those, again, revenue versus expenditures, and the same with community ed. So they're both bringing in a little bit more money and spending a little less than what they're bringing in, so they are going to increase their fund balance. Um, capital, we are going to reduce our fund balance and capital, we just have a lot of things that we need to do, so that's going to go down a little bit, and one of those I'll explain when we get to the five-year plan, kind of the real reason on why it's gonna go down about the amount of money, but it's just, we just have a lot of things we need to get done, and some of them we should get done right away. Building construction, um, we're going to really spend on all of that money, and we get down to the end, you'll see that, debt service remains same trust fund. So when you get down to the very end, the estimate fund balances, um, and at the end of this year, we're looking at a fund balance of one point seven, but at the end of next year, we're looking at one point six, that's a, a drop of sixty-three thousand. Quite frankly, I really thought it'd be around a hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, so I'm excited about that, and as long as they don't take my special ed money, I'll be really happy about that. Uh, food service will go up a little bit from where we were, uh, community ed will go up a little bit, um, health and sa- uh, capital, health and safety, that's everything on there, that's five hundred, from five fifty-two down to five fifteen, we expected it to go down, that's not a surprise for us. Um, and then it gives you the numbers that we have for each group. The, um, operating capital will drop, and part of that is expected, that's really about a fiber optic line that I'll talk to you about, uh, the tech levy, we end up about with the same amount in our reserve fund, uh, that should start to build years now as we start saving again for, uh, the next round of the Chromebooks. Uh, long-term facility maintenance, I do wanna check on that one, and I'll do that by the end of next meeting, I did not expect it be a, is signed for next year, so I'll be checking on that. Debt service, that adjusts itself, the trust fund has pretty much stayed even, and the sale, sale of the building has also stayed even. You do notice that we do expect to spend all the money for, um, the building and construction fund, that was expected to go down by the end of next year. And I'll be meeting with my administrative team to talk about that, I think tomorrow we're gonna have some discussion. Uh, one of our roofing projects came in a lot less, so now we're gonna check into at least the option on whether we can expand that without going out for bids. If we can't, if we have to do the bids, then we won't be able to add more space, or more square footage, I should say. If, if we can, and we'll check with our auditors tomorrow, if we're able to, then we may add additional court, square footage to what we're doing this summer, just because the bids came in so much lower than we thought, almost a hundred thousand dollars lower than we estimated.
Good, yeah.
So we're gonna use that for what it was intended, which is just more roofs.
Roofs.
Yep. So that's kind of where we're at, to tell you the truth, and I'm really happy with our, um, unassigned fund balance that we're carrying over, I really thought it would be less than that, so if that stays the same, I'll be, I'll be happy about it. Again, this is the first reading, you want approval until next, next meeting, so any questions that you have for this?
Yeah, the hundred thousand dollars, so if we did what we said we were gonna do, where does it come to point we give that back to the taxpayers? If we have done our projects, everything that we said, and we have an extra hundred thousand dollars because we got a better value, that's really the taxpayers' money.
That'll be up, I, my argument to that, Bruce, would be as long as we do the things that we said we would do, of which roofing was one of them.
Yeah.
And for the hundred thousand, we're not gonna spend any more than what we already projected, for that, for sure, I'd say that should go into roofing, 'cause that what we said. Some of the other dollars came in under budget, some came over budget, so that does adjust itself a little bit on that. Um, to me, we'll come back with a plan and we'll say, we have this, this is what we would recommend that we use it for. At that point, it certainly could be up to the board to say, no, we wanna send this back, I would say.
I got you.
Um, I would say in the end, the community would say, use it for specific things, and to me, if, as long as we bring it to the board, and I say, you know, we have this amount of money, and it's, it's left over for this, this, and this, and, but this is what we're going to use it for, and explain that to the community, let them know that, um, could even wait a little bit, write an article, wait a little bit, and then wait for you to get any input. My guess is the community's going to say, as long as it helps the school, and you're using it for things that will be beneficial to the school, my guess is that, um, they'll be mine with it, but.
And actually roofing, I mean, 'cause that was an open book statement that we're gonna use it for roofing, and even though that it came in less, we can all, we always have roofs to replace, it's just a matter of, you know, do we have the money or not?
But from the public standpoint, they know when those go through, if we get a better value, we figure out a place to spend the money, right?
I think, I think.
I think we have become so open publicly, I don't think it hurts to open up the door and say, listen, we did better than we thought, we got this hundred thousand dollars, what do you think? If nobody responds, it's not a big deal, but it's not like we go out and ask for money and they're just gonna find a place to spend it, 'cause in this school.
It would have such a little impact on each individual taxpayer that I, I don't think that there was.
And we could still use it for what we intended to use it for, is roofs.
Yep.
It doesn't, it just that we aren't gonna use it maybe at, you know, this year point in time, it might be a year from now that we would have to use it on another roof.
The hundred thousand dollars being less on roofs, that I have no qualm about using for roofs. We, we, we set a specific amount, if we're able to do more work with that amount, that I think is fine. Some of the other things, though, I would, I'd bring forward and say, you know, we saved some money here.
Yeah, that I agree.
We spent more money there, and this is what we have left, and this is what we're proposing that we do with it, and be open to the public, I don't have any issues with that.
I just think it's fair to the public just to say, listen, we did the best job we could, and a lot of it comes onto you and the people you're working with, that we got a better value, well, it doesn't mean you always have to be tacking the customer, or the, the taxpayer.
The taxpayer.
Because from the taxpayer's standpoint, I know that we spend money and taxes going places, and they always figure out a place to spend it, and at least if you open up the door, it follows what we've tried to do to engage the public in what's happening here.
Quite, quite frankly, if this was going to be used for salaries or hiring new people, I would have more concern about it. Anything that we do with this dollars, well, if, if we have some left over, we'll go into HVAC, we'll go into roofs, we'll go into things that we have to do one way or another, but I have no issues with bringing that to the public and saying, this is what we wanna use it for, and giving them time to respond, from my perspective, I, I don't have any issues with that or not. We wanna be completely transparent with it.
And we worked really hard, all of us, every board member, everybody, to, to be that way.
I agree. Any other questions on this, otherwise it comes back next, uh, meeting, and we'll approve.
All right, number four, review and consider approval of the annual AVE consortium agreement with Glacier Lakes Consortium from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen.
This is an annual process for this, um, I don't know if anybody has questions, you can certainly ask, ask Matt, um, but we've been doing this since, I think, I've been here.
Can you just give us a little highlight of what did that actually consist of?
Yeah, for example, you said, um, all, the way you get your money from the state, each, each community generates through, uh, somebody with a whole lot of so many people, but it all falls to a consortium, so you gotta be a member of a consortium to get your money back.
Okay.
So it's, since they started that program, so, we're all, we used to be part of St. Cloud, probably ten years ago, we've been to the club ever since, probably for three, ten years as well.
I'm still teaching it, and it's, I think I got a couple of students, uh, you know, kinda low in the summer now, a lot of E S L type stuff, I'm learning what I'm teaching them.
Good, all right, thanks, Matt.
I'm, we approve the annual AVE consortium agreement.
One second.
I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number five, review and consider approval of the two thousand eighteen five-year capital plan.
Um, I'm gonna go through a few things, I'm not gonna go over this line item by item, I think one of the things I may wanna do in the future to make it easier is put numbers on the left-hand side so I can go by lines and say, go to this line instead of going straight down, so I apologize for that, but I'll kinda stop it, start at the top and just point out a few things as I go down. I think I'm gonna wait one more week to have you approve the five-year plan and ten-year plan, just because there's a few things that the administrators are gonna talk about tomorrow, one of those being whether we wanna move the office right now, and I'll get into that during my reports or during this piece a little bit, so, um, we just need them approved by the end of June, um, that'll meet my needs to do that. So just be aware, first reading, if it doesn't change at all, next meeting, it'll be very fast, I'll just say, were no changes, or this was a change, and then ask for approval, all right? So just a few things to take a look at, if you go down and you look at B, which is middle, um, high school, fence guard, we're gonna start trying some fence guard here, what this stuff does is it goes underneath the fence, and it stops weeds, at least that's our hope, from growing. If that works effectively, then you can just take the lawnmower, and instead of weed whacking, you just drive a lawnmower over, buy it, and you take care of everything, so we're gonna try it, see what happens, you know, we put it down a few years, but those will all disappear if it's not very effective. But if it is effective, I think it will save quite a bit of manpower with us, and I think it's at least worth a try for a year. Um, if you go a little bit further down, um, to four thousand, varsity softball field, just be aware that we're gonna adjust that and move it, so that's gonna, or, sorry, that fence, the four thousand, we're, we are going to put a fence up from where the varsity field is, you know, if you go straight down the lot, the road, there's a fence that goes straight, and then for whatever reason, they cut in and fenced around the, the varsity softball field. We are going to extend that road, or that fence, right down to our gates. Okay? And that's gonna take care, care of that. Um, we do have people run, driving around that piece, um, on occasion, and whether they agree or not, with those gates being closed, I do believe that they should not be driving around those gates, so if the board were there, were to decide to open those gates, um, that's one thing, but until then, we are going to fence it off, and we're also gonna put a post on our walking track because that, they also drive around on our walking track. So, and then we're gonna put some posts in also, um, at the reserve center, from the post to the building, so that, that they have to, you do use the road or not. Um, they just should, should not be, be doing that, just because they disagree, it's still our property. All right, so just be aware, um, a little further down, reconfigure the softball, the JV softball field, that's the field we're gonna move internal a little bit, so it'll give the, the, uh, people to watch a little bit, it'd just be a much better arrangement for the softball field. Um, outdoor scoreboards, we have three more years to pay in for those, um, I would guess that when those disappear, another group could come in and say, well, let's replace all the other scoreboards, and so that could be something that goes on, but at least for those outdoor scoreboards, we, we have next year and two more years to pay for that. Um, the upkeep of the field, you notice it's just a thousand for next year, but then it jumps up to eleven thousand, that's because the money that we got is, as part of that facility project we did, included money to, to upkeep the fields, that disappears, so then it becomes a line item on ours. We are going to cement entrance to the football field, so we're going to start putting a sidewalk in so that it's handicapped accessible for people that, that needed to be able to walk on that, um, from their car, hopefully up, all, all the way up to the ramp on the football stands.
Good idea.
Um, we have some assessments, for love me, Joan and I could not remember these, but we did call the city up, and we asked them about it, and they did some work on two roads, we paid some on, on the front of the elementary, on the side of the elementary, I thought that's all they did, but they did do some work on the other one, so we have a few years of assessments that we need to pay for that. Uh, fiber optic, this is, um, this is a big one, this was one of the reasons that we overspent by so much in our, our, um, capital budget. What happened is that a number of years ago, I came, we, we had hoped that we could use E-rate dollars to replace the line, which was really put in for more of a telephone line than anything else, we're using it to run all of our internet across or not, but it is probably the weakest system, or point in our whole system, because we run a line from the high school to the elementary school that carries our internet, and our phone, for that matter. If that breaks, we're, we're in trouble, it would shut everything down, we've talked about replacing it for a long time. I think our original bid that we got was eighty-five, around there, something like that, and we couldn't afford it at that time, it was a number of years ago, so we just kept kicking that can down the road. Well, when we found out that Arbig was coming in, we said, well, this is a good time, we bought all the equipment here, let's at least ask them for a bid, so they gave us a quote on it, and it was about seventy thousand dollars with some equipment on both ends for them to do it. Well, that's better than what we were, so it saved us, you know, close to twenty thousand dollars, um, but I wanted to make sure if we were gonna pay for the line, that there was nothing else going in that line besides our stuff, if we're paying for it, I didn't think Arbig had a right to put their stuff in, so I did ask to meet, um, Joan set up a meeting so we could meet with Arbig to talk about it. So we did talk about it, and one of the things I pointed out to them is that, you know, they're just going to businesses, but if they put their line in alongside of our line, hospitals right down the road, it opens up some doors to the hospital and some other, um, businesses along the way, so we asked them to reconsider that, and they did, and they are gonna put their line in there, and now we are going to pay them about forty-eight thousand, and we're gonna put a couple thousand dollars worth of equipment on both sides. Um, we are never going to find a better time to do this. They're gonna put twelve, um, fiber optic lines in there, which is more than we'll ever need, but the fiber itself isn't real expensive, so I'd rather put more line in than less line, um, we put this on, it's time to do it. You know, if we don't do it now, then we're back up to the cost when we have to do it. This way, we can do it, it strengthens our weakest point to the elementary school, and so, but that's one of the reasons that we're over, so we're putting fifty thousand dollars into that. Um, a ways down, and this is another thing that we be talking about, reconfigure from, uh, just about the one, two, three, four, fifth lineup, reconfigure the, the high school offices. We've, have talked about this and talked about this, originally, we were going to move the high school office to the, the, uh, community ed area, okay, and then put a wall up there and have a secure thing, so anybody coming into the building would have to go into our office before they could come into the building, it's really a security thing. So we did that, but we talked with high school people, and we kept talking about it, talking about it. Originally, when we looked at leaving the office where it was and just remodeling, we we had talked about remodeling a lot of things, so it was pretty expensive. So we talked about it again, and we decided to try keep it simple. If you come in the main door of the high school, there is a blank where a door belongs, and it goes into the conference room. Then there's the set of the glass doors, and then the second door to the conference room, the actual door that you can get in. If we put a door in the one spot, knock out the wall on the other side of the conference room, not where Max's office is, but that wall, that will give us enough room to move Amy and Cassandra to that area, put a nice desk type of thing in, remodel, and that's what those dollars are for. Now, the thing that has confused this is that yesterday at a meeting, I found out from people presenting from the state, we've been waiting to find out about this security grant. Okay, the security grant was 25 million. Half of it was going to go to Metro, half of it was going to go to outstate. But the trouble is, it said first come, first served, and we had no idea how this was going to shake out. Well, at the meeting yesterday, we found out that mid-July, the grant is going to come out. You're going to probably have 45 days to apply for the grant, and anybody that applies for the grant that meets all of the stipulations of the application are going to go into a pot. The trouble is, I believe there will be, each school can go up to $500,000, which means the money could disappear pretty fast. But it was kind of said first come, first served, so the bigger schools on this one don't necessarily have an edge on us, but the trouble is, every school that's outstate is going to put money in for this grant. And there will be a lot more schools than there is money, so they're going to have to devise some kind of way, whether it's pull a school name from a hat or not. So there is no guarantee that we would get this money even if we applied for it. In the meantime, we would have to wait probably a year before we adjust those office spaces. From my perspective, what I'm going to ask, I'll meet with my administrative team tomorrow. I would like that team to make the decision whether we do the office this year because part of the problem is we've already started to do what we need to do. We've torn off paneling, we've knocked holes, we've disconnected electrical wires. So if it's okay with the board, we would like to decide tomorrow whether we're going to just move forward with it, which there is a good chance, and then look to see if there's something else that we can write the grant for. The elementary school, for instance, needs cameras. The only downside to it is that one of the focuses of the commissioner of education is secure entrances to buildings. But we could wait a year and have get nothing out of this. I'm a little reluctant because we've already gone so far down the road on this. I just think it's too bad that our state is unable to get us this information before the summer hits and before we start doing things that we had talked about. But if it's okay with the board, I would like, we'd like to make the decision tomorrow, and we would inform the board what we decided, whether we went forward or whether they're going to write other grants for it. I know it'd be nice to get the money, but at the same time, I really don't want to wait another year to secure that high school, which we would do if we have to. You know, we think we can do it-
How much money would we need?
Right now, what we've got in there is about 35,000 or so. You know, now, we're doing it simple. It's not like this is going to be a fancy Taj Mahal entrance. It's going to be simple and it's going to be efficient.
It'll end up a little bit to work like David's.
Yes.
At the-
Yep. But either way, even if we got money from the state, it wouldn't do that. The only thing the state dollars would do is probably allow us to do it a little fancier. For instance, if I got $50,000 from the state, I'd probably take that wall and cut it in half and put glass up halfway so that people in the office could see anybody that's coming into that entranceway just by looking up for their desk. It's not necessary, but it would look a lot better. We could put better glass in the doors that are there and do some other things, but I'm also reluctant to wait another year and leave those buildings unsecured the way they are right now. So we put the money into the budget. It's there. Between that and other things, I'm just pointing it out to you. If the board feels comfortable enough, like I said, we'll make the decision tomorrow.
So if you went ahead and put that window in, and you didn't use bulletproof glass, because you probably got a door right there, it's going to be glass, not bulletproof anyway.
Yeah.
It doesn't really make any difference. And then apply for bulletproof glass or some of that other stuff, and we can update it.
That's what we'll talk about tomorrow. I think we could probably get by with that if we wanted to. Right now, at least from my point of view, and I do want to talk to administrative team, it's hard to start once you've started a project. It's hard to stop. It looks ugly. Anybody that comes in the building goes, what in the world were you guys thinking of? You know, and we do want to secure those buildings. I just think it's unfortunate. Like I said, I get upset when I think that, you know, they've known this since the legislative session ended. I found out about it yesterday.
I personally like the idea of the people in there being able to see out.
Yep.
I think that, I think there's some merit to that, just in case something goes wrong, even if they had to hit the floor and call 911.
The other piece is, even if we decide to do it now, that could be something that we do at a later date.
Yeah.
You know, so it's nothing that we can't. I can certainly check to see if we put money into this, and this is what we're going to do, whether we could put the grant in just to do the additional things.
I have one other question, if you don't mind. So it looks to me like it used to have some kind of a door that went up. You know, when we go into the conference room, right on the wall facing the, where people walk in, there's something already there, like, Lou, do you got any idea what that is?
But it's still brick on the outside, though.
Oh, so, but it must be just one layer of brick without the block.
That could be.
Which means that that wouldn't be that bad to put a piece of glass in there.
It may not be, but again, I'm already overspending past what I want. That could be something that we do at a different date, and that's what I would recommend, you know, maybe look at next year's budget, but as we're looking at this, certainly, we could look at that and say, you know, how hard would this be?
Yeah, but with your negotiating ability that we got an example from today-
I think I used up all my negotiating information today out of meeting that Matt and I ran. I think I used up all of it. So, but anyway, so just be aware of that. The other thing that we're going to wait on, I think, right now, is the bottom two. I move that down one year, tear off the block wood shop, the back wall on the wood shop, and I think also the electrical on the wood shop. Now, we talked about taking that one wall out. There's something, there's something that's more important to the wood shop people than the block wall right now, and that's put in an overhead door in. They're expensive. It's over $20,000 to put an overhead in there. But I think in the bottom line is this, I think we need to be set up better to make decisions on what we're going to do. I don't want to knock out the block wall and then find out we didn't need to knock out the block wall. So I think before we put the money in, I do want to spend money on CTE. I want this to advance, but I want to, I want to do it right. So I move that down one year for that. All right? So just be aware, we're still looking at it, but I want to get things set up. I want to buy, get the equipment. We want to know where the equipment's at, those types of things before we start knocking walls out and decide whether we need that. If you go to the second side, I put about 50,000 in for the elementary curriculum. They'll spend more than that this year, but they didn't spend as much last year, so we're going to let them spend a little more for their math curriculum. Additional cameras to the middle school, high school, now, that's something that we might take out. We could ask for that in the grant. So and if we don't get it, then we could put those in. We can put those in when schools operating. Auditorium stage lighting maintenance, we put an amount there that's never been there before, but we need to put some money in to keep the auditorium up. Auditorium sound upgrade, remember we got a donation, and this is the second part of that, so we're going to upgrade that. If you look at, go down to middle school, down to the bottom, just before district wide, curriculum 31,000. Now, you say, well, they only get 31,000. No, they get the same amount, but they're carrying some of it over because they're purchasing things that are subscriptions to things that need to be paid. So if you look down in things to remove from carryover, you'll see 17,300 curriculum for Lori. That will disappear every year, so every year it'll go down, but we're going to put it in the reserve fund in knowing that we're using it, and she's also getting 1700 curriculum for curriculum writing. I can't take that out of Fund V. All right? So that's why it's less, and we have a tractor replacement, that kind of stuff. If you take a look then, there's a list of things that says things to remove from carryover. We're saving for a van, so $4,000 out of the money that we have is for a van in the future, 8,000 for a tractor, so that when we need to buy a tractor, we don't have to decimate our budget for that. The curriculum dollars, the scrubber, we've got 7,000 in there, mats, 1,000, that comes to 37,300. If you look to the left then, you've got our estimated revenue, our estimated carryover, the total then between those two, the fact that we have to take the 37,300, that leaves us the 457, and we're budgeted for 248,000, almost 249,000, and that leaves us 208,000. I had hoped to be up to 250,000 with that, but that's where the fiber optic kind of took care of that. So, but I think all of these things are needed. So next week, if that's okay, like I said, I meet with my administrative team tomorrow. We may adjust this. If we do, I'll come back and I'll say, this is what we changed, and then vote on it at the next meeting if that's all right.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Alrighty, so we're going to go to number six, review and consider approval of the 2018-19 long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan.
Okay, this will be the same. I'm just going to go over some things, and then I'm going to suggest that we just wait to approve at the next meeting just again because it might, we might tweak it a little bit tomorrow. If you go down the first part of this plan, and again, I will, you know, I can't say I've always agreed with the state on some of the things and their timing. I will tell the state and anybody I talk to, the long-term facility maintenance money that we've gotten has been a lifesaver for us to be able to get things done. For the health and safety dollars, just a few points out this towards the bottom. It says add ADA doors to the high school. That would be part of the office revamp. Okay, so those doors would be added to wherever we relocate our high school office to playground equipment. As you know, David has started a fundraiser to upgrade our playground equipment, and as much as I'd like to pay for it all and just be done with it, we can't. We have too many other needs, but at least for this year, we're going to put 14,000 into it. David knows that. High school wrestling mats, this is something that I keep shaking my heads on. This is so that we have to put up fireproof wrestling mats in our sprinklered cement wrestling room. If you hear the sarcasm there, you would be correct. Sidewalk to the football bleachers and stuff, that goes with the other one. What I have to check on is do I need the 1,000 in addition to this or not? So I'm going to check on that with Matt tomorrow, or Max tomorrow. Then we get down to other things. Let's go all the way down to deferred capital building envelope. It's past the halfway mark. Concession stand steel roof. We're going to put a steel roof on that concession stand to be done with it. Couple of things, replaced backboards in the middle school. We still have all those old metal backboards. We're going to put glass backboards up there for the kids to use. Okay, that's middle school. Boiler repair at the high school has been remained 20,000. I think in the future, the district's going to have to look at replacing one of the elementary school boilers, so we'll start looking at saving money for that. Not this year, have too many things to do. Three CTE shops painting. We put 8,000 in there to at least start getting our shops to look better, so we put money in there to paint them. The only thing that may hold this up is that at the same time, we're looking at doing some things with exhaust fans in the shops. I don't want to paint those areas and then do a lot of welding or whatever we need to do for the exhaust fans and then have to repaint those areas. So when we do it, I don't know. I would guess for sure by the end of June of next year, but we have to look at when the best time to do it so that we don't have to do it a second time. But we're going to put the money in there to start doing it. Now, it says elementary school bathroom partitions. I will tell you that we're spending well over $65,000 on our elementary school bathrooms, and in those, two things keep coming to me as far as things that we need to get fixed in the elementary school. One is the bathrooms, and one are those hand washers. We're fixing them all. They'll all be new for next year. We're going to put infrared things in there, so no more stomping on that pedal to make the water come out. Kids will stick their hands underneath them, and they will run. So that's all being fixed. All of the bathrooms are going to be done over. It's just long overdue. It's a lot of money that we're going to spend in there, but it's well worth it for what we'll get out of that in the elementary school. Elementary school bathroom positions, then if you go to the backside, just a few things, replace parking lot lights. We're going to continue to upgrade to LED lights. It's just the way we need to go. Then it says replace lights to LD hallways and classrooms. We're going to start every, at least for now, and I would suggest it continues, that every year we pick a hallway or classrooms and start replacing our fluorescent bulbs with LED lighting. So this is just the start of it. As more money frees up, and if we get more, some of these big items done, then I would think that you will see more money going into those things because it's really the thing to do. Electrical for the elementary bathroom is there. Bandroom lighting, we're changing that to all LED. We had a heck of a time finding something that would work. Donnie has been looking for something and trying things for I don't know how long to change the lighting in there. If you remember right, those bulbs are $75 a piece in there right now. So we'll change it. It's all going to be LED, and it'll be a good thing. We'll get that changed over. Painting in general, we're going to give buildings some money to start painting, to start brightening things up. That hasn't been done. Elementary school carpet is going to be replaced. I'm not fond of carpet, but I think they need it in the elementary school choir room just because of the sound. Classroom ceiling tile system, this is another thing I think we need to start doing. You can see the frameworks for the tile. If you go down some of our hallways, that framework has started to rust. We're going to start replacing some of that. Okay, it's just a matter of looks as much as anything. And then boxes of tile so that we can make sure that we can replace the tile as we need to. We're going to refinish the gym floor just for our ability to, and I just lost the term, thank you, that's the word I'm looking for, just for our warranty. We need to have somebody else do it for now. We need to build up the wax before we do it ourselves. So I think the question came up, and I think Cheryl might have asked that of me, is do we want to just continue to have this? Our people are busy and stuff. I think once we go through two more years of this, then we'll talk with the custodians and we'll decide whether we start doing it or whether we continue to have somebody else do it.
Well, you know, you used to be able to get it done by where you bought the product, and they would do it for nothing. Hillary's always did. That'd be something to look into.
They weren't willing to do it for nothing.
They weren't?
Not these guys, anyway.
No, not these guys, but somebody, I mean.
I think we'll talk about it once we're done. Right now, we want to keep that warranty in place.
Well, no, after that.
Yes. I think there'll be a lot of discussion on what we want to do at that point. Hallway and ceiling grid, again, some of that. This is a big one for us. High school office air handler, not cheap. Okay, that's taken 52,000. That's over the high school office. Again, more money in the elementary school bathrooms down through plumbing. And then the last thing is just the welding exhaust and the welding shop exhaust. One of two things I think, we're going to leave that money in the budget. We're going to talk tomorrow about whether we want to worry about the exhaust this time, or maybe we want to just take that money, put the overhead door in for the wood shop. We'll talk about that tomorrow, and that's one of the reasons I just soon wait on this. As you notice, we're spending what we're getting.
What's the deal with the high school air handler?
Old.
Doesn't work?
We've replaced things so many, or not replaced, we have fixed things so many times around here that it's just time-
But compare that $52,000 to some of the stuff for CTE or something like that. Are we appropriate to be putting $52,000 there instead of spending it with the kids?
We need to have air handlers that work. There's no doubt about that. That's not, you know, we talked about air quality in buildings and all that. If you quit replacing the air handlers, then it's the air quality that you have. We've already fought that battle a number of years ago when we first got the first project piece where we fixed a lot of the HVAC system. I would not recommend that we start going backwards on that. We have too many needs right now for everything that we need to get fixed because we neglected things, not because we wanted to neglect them. We didn't have money to do it. We're finally getting to the point where we are able to fix a number of things because of this long-term facility maintenance plan. There will come a time when there will be a lot more money to do some of the things that we're talking about, but long-term facility maintenance dollars can only be used to fix things in the building. We could fix ventilation, but we couldn't expand the ventilation. We could fix a door, but we couldn't- We could fix a door, but we couldn't put a new door in.
I got you.
We could probably fix, well, for the air handler, we're fixing an air handler, that's why we can use it for that. But we wouldn't be able to buy, um, things, you know, one thing that we could check on is maybe some of the equipment that's worn out, I don't know if we're able to, we could check on that, but right now, we have too many other needs. So, but that's a good question, Bruce, I think I'll.
Well, I look at two things, do we kick the can and something like that to provide something for the students?
Yeah, well, I would argue that fresh air in your building.
Yeah.
Is providing a lot, because you guys were here when we get complaints when classrooms weren't, weren't having enough air.
And we, and we've run into that where.
Well, I don't mean to pick on a place that said, high school office. Kids are in there all the time, unless they're on detention.
It's just not the office that.
Well, then we could put them on. We could put them on Tanto in the garage too, if we wanted to, if you really wanted to do that.
You're okay that the staff can doesn't get much share of that?
Well, if we gotta kick a can, I'd kick the can there instead of a kid.
It's, it's to the point where we can't kick this can. Our, for our air handlers, we've kicked that can a long time. We need, we need to do this one, or, or believe me, I don't like spending fifty-two thousand on that neither, if it wasn't necessary, we would look at something else, but we need to get that done. Um, let's see, uh, bathrooms, I think, so that, that's it. If we make adjustments to this, I'll tell you about the adjustments, otherwise, at the next meeting, I will really not spend a whole lot of time on this, unless you have a question. If something else pops up, ask the question, otherwise, I'll just be asking for approval.
Alright.
Any other questions on this before we leave it? Good questions, good discussion.
Alright, number seven, review and consider approval of a contract with J. Stephen Johns LLC.
As, as everybody is aware of that, we've had two people helping us with our hardware type of systems. Um, Jim, we contracted with and also Jonah, to a lesser degree. Now, we did need additional help as we've gone to the one-to-one piece, so it was really nice to have both of those people helping us with that. Uh, Jim is retired at this point, um, and Jonah, we believe, is the person that should go forward with this. It's a one-year contract, I think for a couple of reasons, one is that I think this would also bring his contract in alignment with all the other contracts that are coming up. So when you start all the other contracts, everything's gonna come back next year. Um, what we're looking at is an increase in hours for him. Um, he'll be putting in, I think, about three hundred more hours than what Jim did and we're going to pay him fifty-two thousand and it comes to about forty-one, sixty-seven an hour. Uh, Jim was, I think, at about fifty-four, fifty-five dollars an hour when he retired. Um, I think we should do this, so I'm, I really am highly recommending this contract, I think it's a fair contract based on what you can get people to help in this, this area. Could we get somebody cheaper? Yeah, I probably could, I could nickel dime this area, but that's what tends to get us in trouble in the first place. You know, Jonah knows the system, he's worked with the system, he's familiar, he's done an excellent job for us. Uh, I guess I just would recommend this, I think it's a fair contract to both sides. It's a one-year contract, if things don't work out, he'll have another year to, to look at that and make some other decisions, but I think at the end of the year, you will find that he's, he's done more. I've always found, um, him to put more time in than is ever, he ever gets paid for. Any questions for me on this one? If not, I'm looking for approval.
So I got a motion from Heidi and a second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number eight, review and consider approval of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, fitness center pause salary schedule.
Uh, this, Matt and I have talked about this, this is the salary schedule that we think is appropriate. It's about anywhere from a forty-five to forty-six, um, an hour increase. Remember, one of the things that we were is way behind for some of these positions, that's when we negotiated last time, we got a lot of our people caught up. Um, with this, we think this is a fair jump. Uh, we're doing it for one year for the same reason that we talked about in that we'd like to get these on a two-year contract, just like everybody else, so that they don't, you know, you don't run into a group that we get some money that other groups didn't have access to. So I think it's fair to put them on the same cycle, it's a lot of work that year, I admit that, but at least everybody's looking at the same pot for a two-year contract, and I, I think this is appropriate, so I would just recommend approval.
I'll make a motion, will we approve?
A second.
So I got a motion from Rick and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Number nine, review and consider approval, resolution establishing dates for filing affidavit, no, affidavit, of candidacy.
Yep. Um, this is just, doesn't happen every year, only happens when I have school board members that are up for election. So we do need to pass this resolution to meet the state requirements establishing the dates for filing affidavits of candidacy for the school board. I would say I'd recommend approval, but I think we gotta do this one, whether we like to or not.
Motion to approve.
A second.
I got a motion from Lou and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? I think the only discussion I would say is how many candidancies are we looking at to fill?
Well, I, I have my guess on this, we do.
How many, how many file, are need to be filed, I should say?
Um, I think there are.
Four.
Four openings.
Four.
Um, would you, would you like me to list the ones right now?
Uh, no, just so that they know that there's four.
There are four, four openings. What we don't know yet is how many of the current board members are going to.
File.
File for those openings. So, yes.
Well, it does, on here, it says, you know, page is, the general election will be held Tuesday, November sixth, two thousand eighteen, at that election, three members will be elected.
Um, we will, we will check that one out, we'll have the correct number on there.
Should be four.
So if, if that is wrong, just permission when you approve to make sure that that's accurate.
Okay. So, all in motion. Well, we got it, we got that already, so we got, we got the, now we have to go through the roll call.
Yep.
Mark?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Carried. Uh, nothing under personnel, and then we will go down to number one, community ed report, Dick, Matt Dickhousen.
Yeah, and just so the boards are aware, um, the rest of the administrative team is going to come in at the next meeting. We only have one in July, so they're gonna come in at the end of June for their reports. Uh, and Matt's here because he's taping, so it saves him a little time to be able to come in this time.
Alright, thanks. Okay, our summer programs are in full force, as you probably saw coming in today. Um, we've had a successful Bulldog sports broadcasting season and we're actually gonna be at the state tournament, so our crew will be down there. Uh, we did appeal to the high school league, they don't allow you to do video streaming. Um, we did appeal just on the grounds that no one else was doing it, we are totally student-led, it's a good experience, they denied us, so we can put our, our video on the scoreboard and then our guys are gonna do play-by-play, so kind of a radio hybrid.
Oh, that's at least, people can see the score then and.
Exactly.
And we'll be able to hear it, that's.
Yeah, and actually, we reached out, um, to, uh, Jordan and Jordan is gonna have, who we play, they're gonna have one of their, uh, former graduates who's in sports broadcasting, he's gonna sit with our guys and do some color commentary.
Oh.
To give the perspective of the other team, so we're kind of excited about that.
Cool.
Yeah, so we're really trying to, to build that, I'm searching for students for, uh, next fall, uh, did get Max to allow us to do a game or two, uh, we can't put it online after for scouting purposes, but, um, after the season, we could post those out, but, um, I'm also reaching out to volleyball and if we have, you know, kids that wanna do it, it's just good experience, it's fun, you know, if you can get behind a microphone and.
They've done a wonderful job.
Haven't they? They've just, their, their rapport is really good together.
So how will, how will they livestream it then, from this, from the game? Is it on through our?
It'll be on our YouTube channel, so yep, and if you go to the school's website right now, just click on the big banner on the top, so we're, you know, all the technical things fall in order, they've got their credentials and you have to go through all that process, but, so they're excited to keep doing it. If we would've known we could do that, um, we would've even done just audio at the section, you know, the section championship, so it's kind of fun for the kids.
So the audio will be on the website?
Yeah, it'll be on our YouTube channel, so the link is right on the school's website, so it'll bring you, so it'll look, just like you're watching on YouTube, you just can't see the game, it's just the scoreboard and then their commentary, so. So when you're sitting at the parade, you can pull that up and, or go to the game, so.
Or get playing at blind standstill or.
Yeah, there you go.
Not cooking hamburgers.
That's right. When you're not cooking hamburgers.
That's right, so, but the, yeah, I really, uh, hats off to the kids, they've just really risen to that and, um, I'm hoping that more wanna come up and, and continue it, so. Uh, summer pause is going well, our numbers are a bit lower than what we expected, however, the positive is now we're only taking one bus on field trips, so it does save some, some costs there, but we anticipate throughout the year, a lot of times, families will start and they'll have high school kids watch, or, uh, they'll just try them staying at home and sometimes we get them throughout, so we're prepared for that, we've got really good staff there and.
I would think too, June is so busy with all the community activities, so it probably will increase once those kind of finish for those little ones and then.
Yeah, we usually have seen, you know, increase, but our original starting number is a little bit lower and which is kind of surprising, but I mean, we're still averaging fifty kids a day, so for us saying that slow and Bob and I sat down and we were looking at starting this, if we thought we could get eighteen to twenty kids a day.
I remember that conversation.
Yeah, so, but at last year with sixty-two kids a day, it's, it's different, our staff is liking that, it's a little less stressful or hectic, but, uh, we're actively planning fall, so if you have any program requests or ideas or feedback, just please get us that, we're always a season or two ahead, so. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Alright, number two, budget and finance committee report, well, we went through majority of the stuff already today, so I don't know what else.
I think the only thing else I would add is that we've set up one more meeting for next week, one of the things I'm waiting for is, we do use a software package where we download all this information and it allows me to make some forecasting. They're downloading that information now, so I'm going to meet with the finance committee and I'll report at the next meeting a little bit about what that looked like when, when we look at the budget for next year and I'll have it projected out hopefully and be able to get a little bit more information. I'm just anxious for them to load it, so.
Uh, number three, administrator report, Robert Hewitt.
Uh, just a, a number of things, I'm gonna pass this on, one of you guys might be interested, this is Donlar Construction, this is who we're gonna use to get us a cost estimate on the, the proposed facility project that we've talked about. Okay, and they've got some information, so if you wanna take a look at this or pass around and look. Um, I met the person today and we negotiated a cost, cause they, they are, uh, somebody that we're just working with, so they're, um, I just lost the term, I'm also looking for a consultant for us, so I don't have to bid, it's going to be a cost of five thousand dollars, uh, I would tell you, we did negotiate a little bit with them and, you know, and that's what we ended up settling with, so I think it's a more than fair cost for what they're gonna do for us. So they will give us a cost for, for that, and like I said, I, I believe that they could have charged us more and had a, had a reason to do it, so we're excited that they're willing to try that for us. Um, I think as we start going down this road, I may invite a couple of board members in to meet the person. Eventually, they will present to the facility committee with what they find, and I think part of that is all about building trust. I was really impressed with the individual that came down today and talked about it and the way he talked about Evan was down, we were also looking at the roofing project that we're doing, so we had a meeting afterwards and I know that Matt joined us and I, I don't know about Matt, but I was really impressed with the individual, so I think this person will be able to do it for us. Uh, so just be aware of that. High school office renovation, I think I've talked about more, most of all this at this, this point. We've got some holes in the walls now, we just need to decide whether we're gonna do it this year or go for the grant and, and really, it's going to be an administrative, me, I didn't hear any board members tell me that that wasn't okay, we're gonna make the decision tomorrow and that's what we're gonna go with. It'll either be move forward or go with the grant, and we'll talk about that tomorrow. Um, I just thought graduation went very well. You know, it did get a little toasty about midway to the end, but it was cool enough, at least in the beginning, so that I don't think it was really bad and I thought the kids were very well behaved, the crowds were very well behaved, I thought it was just a great event. Uh, we met on the roofing project today, be done this summer, we talked about that, custodians are working hard on getting the building in shape for next year. Uh, we're going to meet with the Gail's CTE committee on June twentieth, um, at least for this year, uh, Bruce is kind of sitting on that, so is Randy, um, I think in the future, you might wanna put that in as a committee, uh, to be posted and stuff. Summer lunch program's going well, partly because of our pause program. They come down there and eat, it's just, no, it's a handy deal for everybody. Uh, I went to a C meeting, they just gave us an update on the legislative accomplishments this, this session, um, it was last week, I think I went, it was for a couple of weeks, it was when they're down, down in the cities, I think tomorrow we have one in, in Campbell. Um, I think they'll tell us the same thing, I can only say, a lot of finger pointing at everybody and very little done. They can say what they want, but I certainly was not impressed with the accomplishments our legislature got, and I'm not pointing fingers at any one particular person. We have Democrats there, we have independents there, we have Republicans there, we have a governor there. They didn't get the job done and they can point their fingers at whoever they want, but they should be pointing them at themselves, cause they're all a part of what, what they didn't do, they didn't do anything with school safety and a number of other things that should have been taken care of this round. And, you know, people are gonna point it at the veto, well, they're all negotiating, they're all a part of this as far as I'm concerned. Uh, I mentioned bus transportation, trying to find a date to meet, to negotiate, we have, hired somebody to help us negotiate that contract for twenty-five hundred, I think it's money well spent. Uh, final thing is just, we had a QCOM meeting today, we kind of have to report things to the board, I'll, yeah, the board wants more information, I'll bring in somebody like Don to give a more full report to the board, but we discussed what went on, what went well, they do a survey of the staff every year on our QCOM plan, uh, we found things that the staff thinks we should change and stuff, so we're looking at that, we got information from the survey, so what went well, what didn't go well, what we need to look at. Uh, we met all the state requirements this year for the plan, uh, the majority of the staff met their requirements for compensation, um, pre-imposed tests that they need to do, but not all. Uh, we set high standards for our school goals, we didn't meet those this year, partly because with the new Every, Every Student Success Succeeds Act, that changed some things, and in addition, we have a number of parents and students who have chose not to take the MCA's, for instance. Every student who chooses not to take the MCA really is, is classified as does not meet proficiency with us. And when you have a school system our size, that can have a major impact on our, our test scores, even if there's two people in a class, if, if they don't meet proficiency because they didn't take the test, that does count against us. I think it's the craziest thing, I don't think the state should do that, but I'm assuming the state does it that way so that they can kind of pressure us to pressure people to take the test. The bottom line is that parents have a right to opt out of that test, but I think it does have a negative impact on us. Uh, we're looking at making some changes to the plan and we'll get those TMD this summer, uh, we can adjust the plan as we need, for instance, we're looking at bringing PBIS into the elementary school, that's Positive Behavior Intervention System, is to help with bullying and behavior and all those things. It's a costly program, we're hoping to use some of the money to help pay, to get some of our staff members trained for that, that would be one of the things that we're looking at, we're also looking at adding some more support in some areas for supervision and some things, so that can come back, and again, if the board wants more information on that, we'll be glad to do a more of a full presentation to the, for the school board. That's what I got. Any questions for me?
You did well for your second to the last.
Well, because I've kind of moved things down the road, we're gonna have more things on that next agenda, so.
You just want to make it.
And I will also, if you're on the policy committee, I still do want to have one meeting[1768.54] next week, so look for my text tomorrow.
Any other board chairing information?
A couple things. I just want to mention, just because I'm proud of it, our fourth grade boys' basketball team is in the state basketball championship tournament on Sunday, the Pace Center Tournament, I think it's the first time we've ever had a team in the state tournament. And the sixth and seventh grade boys both qualified for what's called the Pace Center Invitational Tournament, which is a big deal, so they're all down, they'll be in the cities over the next two weekends, so I'm very proud of that. And we have a C meeting tomorrow, I'm anxious to hear more about that, licensure is, I guess, a big deal, I want to find out more about that, but that's going to be.
Yeah, that's kind of just coming out now.
Yep, and I'm planning on going to the Minnesota School Board Association seminar, August 6, down in the cities, if anyone else is interested, the full day of seminars, and just more information, more like what we go to in January, but more condensed, and so I'll be planning on attending that.
Yeah, and we do put some money in the budget for those types of things for the board members, and from my point of view, the more that you can do those types of things, the better, so I'm excited to hear that, doing that. If you're interested, just need to, because I'm the one that really needs to register you for that, just come in and let me know what's going on, and I can use my district credit card to get you registered. Don't forget him though, he's got to do the WCD report.
Oh.
He's still ready to go.
Lou?
He almost made his motion.
I could see it in his eyes.
Okay, here it goes. We met, okay, I will too, we met yesterday, or last night, at Minnesota National Bank, the SOC Center, and this was an additional meeting to our regular meeting, so it was very short. We discussed some open positions, ALC, they're looking for a halftime person and a star teacher they need on par, and West Central Manager Payroll, we discussed that quite a bit. They, we talked about SMS and KDV, and after the discussion, it was a motion made to go with SMS, so that was taken care of, passed. And the handbook was, agreed to break it down into five different handbooks because of the positions being so different for the non-certified staff. Oh, and then we had a new hire approval, speech language person, and then after the adjournment, we had cupcakes and other stuff because of Bob's last meeting with West Central Ed. And we spent about half an hour talking to Bob.
It was nice visiting.
And that was about.
Yeah, the handbooks, just so people know, are really the, kind of the contracts or agreements with the non-certified staff.
Opposed to one, they broke it down to five because of the differences in the position.
They are considerably different.
That's it?
Yeah, that was it. Motion to adjourn.
Okay, got a motion from Lou, a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed, same sign, and carried.